Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January ninth River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can I have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the December twelfth Council Meeting.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I make a motion we approve the bills for the December twenty-sixth period of one million seven hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty cents, and for the January ninth period for one million two hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, now would be the time. Sure, come on up.
Thank you, my name is-
There should be a form there for you to sign on, too.
Oh, I should sign the form.
Yes.
Well, I can't sign it without a pen, but thank you very much. My name is Bonnie Jones Whittoon, and I am the chairperson of Among Friends. And Among Friends is a locally friendly operated respite center for individuals with dementia so that their caregivers can have a day away. We opened October third, which means we have just celebrated our third month. Our budget is nothing like the city budget, as I just heard the numbers from last month, but it is a very dedicated group of volunteers, all volunteers, who have provided a nine to three P.M. on Tuesday every week respite opportunity for individuals. Who's eligible? Anyone with a dementia or dementia-related illness who can come in terms of, you know, where it's held at, the first congregational church. It is not a church function. It is not open or closed to anyone, but open to everyone. A couple of the things that I'd like to say is we have a really great response from the community so far, and we, as an organization, feel really strongly that in this particular city, we are providing a new and wonderful opportunity for individuals with dementia, because in all of Pierce County, we have no other such facility. Now, I'm sure most of us are thinking dementia will never come my way. Stats tell us differently. We are living in a time of growing older. We are living in a time of being healthy into older age, and as a result, the things that we consider so important to us in terms of brain function do change. And we, as a culture, have an opportunity to change with those things. So, we have opened Among Friends, again, open on Tuesdays from nine till three P.M. We have a website. We have a Facebook page, and we have an email if anyone is interested, and I have provided all of you with a handout tonight. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the opportunity to spread the word. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Just one quick thing, Bonnie.
Sure.
If you want to go ahead and say the email and the phone number, go ahead, so people at home will have it.
Oh, sure.
Especially your web address, if you said you had one, because you have the phone number and email address down here, but not a web or a Facebook, where to find you on Facebook.
Okay, the phone number is seven-one-five-two-nine-three-two-five-six-one. And if you go on Google and Google "Among Friends RF," we should pop up both the website and the Facebook. And the email is amongfriendsrf@gmail.com. Thank you, and thank you for asking me to add that.
Okay, anybody else in the audience, something they want to stand up? Sure, come on forward.
Well, first of all, my name is Shannon Zimmerman. For those of you who don't know me, I serve as the state representative in this area. Thank you for the time this evening. And the reason I'm here, it's a riveting topic, I'm sure, but it's obviously one that this council has taken up, and I think it's an important one, is just to comment very briefly on the dark store subject, which is a subject that many communities in the state of Wisconsin are now tackling and addressing. And I remember, you know, as a person in the community who is a strong advocate for business, you know, certainly growing a number of them here, you know, being pro-business, and when you appreciate and recognize maybe what the challenge is with the dark store topic, you realize very quickly that it's not necessarily in the best interest of our neighbors and our taxpayers. And so, for those of you who don't know, and I'm assuming most of you do, and you read all your materials, you know, dark stores are, in essence, there's a loophole that allows companies to establish, most often big-box retailers, large buildings, large facilities, and then leveraging, or maybe to some may use the term manipulating the law, in such a way that they can receive a lower tax assessment. The burden of that tax assessment then falls on the local residents, which is something that clearly this council has identified, which is the resolution that I know has been drafted, and I certainly would support that. But I just want to provide a couple updates in terms of what's happening in Madison on this bill, because I think it's relevant. So, first of all, there are two bills right now that are in process that are meant to address this, AB three-eight-six and eight-seven. They are bipartisan bills, and I want to make sure I stress that fact, because this subject is not a partisan issue. It's an issue that affects everybody. And so, I think that we've, you know, regardless of what you see on your television some nights, on CNN or the other channels, there's a lot of really good people on both sides of the aisle that come together to tackle these subjects on behalf of our communities, like River Falls and Madison. But in essence and in short, you know, this subject has been heard now in public hearing. It is moving to exec, and would then, of course, go to the floor. I would speculate the speaker would have final say, but to set expectations with this group, even though I think the resolution is the right thing to do, to send that message to Madison. I don't expect it to hit the floor during this session. I think it's more probable that it may have a chance in the fall. I expect actually, because of the big-business opposition, that there might be a few tunes and tweaks to it. But I want to do at least, you know, provide that information and set that expectation. On behalf of certainly my representation of the community, and I think it's in alignment with what you all have done here, I'm going to continue to advocate strongly that we close that loophole, and so that we do not unnecessarily harm the local taxpayers in River Falls and the broader area.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, Mayor Dan, council members, city staff, and fellow guests tonight. Actually, here, this is a representation. It has nothing to do with my presentation, except it has a little bit to do with water. Of course, I speak a lot about the dams, and you're going to be looking at things coming forward to you soon to make a decision on the fate of the hydro dams here in River Falls. This is actually just a ship arriving too late to save a drowning witch. All River Falls taxpayers gain from our current production of profitable renewable green energy. That green energy is being produced twenty-four-seven, year-round. It's not something that has to do with the seasonal things. As you look at these documents that will come to you, look for numbers that are there, which is the profitability of the hydros. Look for numbers that don't seem to be there at this time, and that's numbers that relate to how many residents take part in the seasonal activities of kayaking and trout fishing, which seems to be the thing that will be promoted by removing the dams and hydros. Look for those numbers. I hope they are able to be brought to you. This is actually looking at what your base that you're trying to do something for is. And then also, those numbers have to be in place, because if they aren't, if the dams are removed, will these numbers change any? Will you have achieved anything through your action of removing the dams? This is just my caution to you as you move forward in the discussions and decisions on these very important issues. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Hanson. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that has anything they'd like to talk about? Otherwise, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First one is the resolution supporting closure of property assessment loopholes, AKA the dark store strategy. The dark store strategy hurts residents by placing a larger property tax burden on them. By supporting this resolution, the city council is supporting national big-box retailers and chain stores having to pay the appropriate property tax assessment and to make property taxes equitable and fair all in Wisconsin. Second one is a resolution regarding migratory bird day. The migratory bird day this year is May fifth. That's it. Anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull consent agenda item number one.
Okay.
Just said I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
Resolution supporting closure of property assessments loopholes, AKA dark store strategy. I had commented about the need to oppose the dark store strategy before, and I have stated urgent need of why this must be done, getting it onto our agenda today. And now I want to remind the public what is at stake if we let the big-box-style retailers set all the rules in this state. If we allow for these mega corporations and franchises to not pay their fair share in taxes, not only will we have to pay more taxes to make up for the lost revenue, but it will impact critical city services that need proper funding to maintain them, since there will be a massive tax shift. The dark store strategy is a tax loophole being used by big-box retailers and other national chains to lower the amount they pay in property taxes, and putting it on the public's back to pay their taxes. Instead, retailers such as Walmart, Lowe's, Target, Meijer, Home Depot, Menards, and Walgreens are arguing that the market value of their thriving stores should be based on the size, sales of similar-sized comparable properties that are vacant and abandoned. This is wrong. They are actively working against the public's best interest with their greed and blind grab for power. The public should never have to pay for any company who wants to avoid paying their fair share in taxes. This would add to the troubling generational divide in our country, where millennials have half the net worth of the boomers and make twenty percent less than their parents did when they were the same age in life because of declining wages, among other variables. Millennials' homeownership rate is lower, while their student debt is drastically higher. The dark store strategy would hurt our housing industry incredibly more than it already is hurting for generations to come, and would be devastating, making it even more harder for future generations to own a house because of the tax shift of the dark store strategy. If we don't address this issue, it will be the largest property tax shift in state history, where homeowners, renters, and small businesses get stuck paying the bills of the most wealthy and biggest box corporations who are trying to game the system in their favor by not paying their fair share of taxes. Today, we can come together as a city and oppose this in our resolution here. There are two bills that have an overwhelming bipartisan support among legislatures. The dark store strategy bill, SB two-ninety-two, which has a remarkable sixty-eight cosponsors, and the Walgreens reversal bill, SB two-ninety-one, has an amazing fifty-eight cosponsors. Together, both these bills will put an end to the dark store strategy. There's a special election coming up in this state. I would strongly urge the public to call and ask the candidates if they will oppose the dark store strategy publicly, because if they can't do that much, who are they really representing? I am in favor of opposing the dark store strategy. Mr. Mayor, I move in approval of consent agenda item number one.
Second.
Questions or comments?
As long as we pull the item, I would like to amend the resolution, the eighth whereas. The Republican-controlled Indiana legislature, as been pointed out by State Representative Zimmerman and Councilmember Downing, this is a bipartisan thing. I'm not sure why we felt the need in the resolution to put Republican-controlled in there. So, I would make the motion that we would remove Republican-controlled from the eighth whereas.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now back to the original. We got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then Jeff.
Yeah, number two. I'm not opposed to this all. I just wanted to make sure we realized and everybody else realized, is there any obligations we, as a city, have towards this if we're for the migratory bird day? Do we have any financial obligations? Do we have any other obligations that we have to make sure that we keep lands and wetlands available to satisfy this need? I didn't see that where that requirement is in there. Is it just a matter of signing the paper, and we're a bird city?
Well, it does help with our application status. It is a requirement. However, what this typically has done in the past is set International Migratory Bird Day as May fifth this year for the St. Croix Valley Bird Club. So, then they come and hold International Migratory Bird Day here at the city.
I guess what qualifies us to be a bird city?
Well, there's a number of points within the application. I haven't looked at it recently, so I can't give you all of those, but I could email them to you.
Do you have any, like, what's the top one? I mean, what, I mean, any clue on it at all?
I can speak a little bit on that.
Okay, thanks.
So, Bird City is a designation, like some of the other designations, where you have kind of a checklist or a score sheet that says if you do this, then you're bronze, silver. In this case, I don't know if there's different classifications, if you're like-
There are.
-a bald eagle, or a-
There's a high flyer.
-crow, or what the different categories are. But yes, the city, and in the resolution to become Bird City, and each year when we renew, I shouldn't say that. I'm not sure if each year when we renew, we've brought a new resolution. But in the original resolution, there's a list of stipulations. So, for example, each year in a city newsletter or some other publication, we have to talk about a bird topic. So, it might be, don't let your cat outside to roam free, because it kills this many birds. Doing an event like this counts the points. This event, there's not a lot of cost and staff time into the event. In fact, I think some of our staff volunteered to be there on that day. But there's some costs involved with the Bird City designation, and then there's some things that we would have a hard time keeping our Bird City designation if we decided to do. So, just for instance, would be if we started to have goose hunting on a regular basis downtown, or that probably would go against our status. So, there's some policy things that the council would, you still have the ability to do it, but it would put your status in jeopardy. If you'd like, I can provide an update on what we did when we became a Bird City and what the requirements are going forward.
Yeah, I'm just kind of real interested, and it really sounds like it's more symbolic than anything else, but perhaps I'm wrong.
It's primarily symbolic, but, you know, there's some responsibilities, some things that, like I said, if the council were considering certain policy things as it relates to birds, we may advise you as staff that, well, here's something, this is advised against for Bird City status. And so, that's kind of how we look at it, too, is you've given, previous council's given us direction that you'd like to maintain the designation. I think it was implied at the time, though, that if this became a, you know, twenty thousand dollar a year commitment, that wasn't what you were trying to do. Primarily, it's ceremonial or designation-wise. Does that answer your question?
What does it cost us, then, on a year if it's not twenty thousand? Is it twenty dollars?
Say it's less than twenty thousand and more than twenty dollars.
Well, that rounds it down. All right.
From my perspective, it's provided an opportunity for city staff to have a dialogue with, there is a bird club in St. Croix River Valley, and River Falls is a very strong, has a very strong part in that. The event that's held in the spring is really well-attended. It's kind of amazing how many people show up here, and there's all kinds of children's activities all over around City Hall and so forth, and netting of birds early in the morning, and banding, and all that kind of thing. So, it's, I think it's, to my mind, largely an educational and promotional status, and it's worked very well in the past for that.
Good. Thanks for sharing that.
I'll make a comment and take a little more risk than maybe City Administrator Simpson will. But I believe Tony Steiner, the city planner that just recently retired, was the one who did this application.
Originally.
Originally. Tony was very good at these types of things, and I don't want to insinuate that it was on autopilot, but I think the time expended by staff to do this application was nominal to do this renewal. I can't imagine, other than the sign-
And we are a high flyer, so we're the highest status.
Well, with that, I'd like to approve this.
And you can get more information at birdcitywisconsin.org. It lists the cities, including us, and it lists right there exactly what we've done. And as I recall, too, a lot of what we needed to get the points, we had already had been doing actively. So, things like including in your smart growth plan, discussion of habitat, you know, which we have, and having a partnership with bird groups, which we have with the group. So, you can go through there. And we have spent some money in partnership with the St. Croix Valley Bird Club on different things. I think one year, we bought for the library, we bought binoculars and bird book, you know, bird identification book sets, and that was, and then the library had those for people to pass out. And so, we've spent some money, but I can, it isn't that difficult for us to put that in context. But similar, like Tree City, you've got a list of things to do. But we're a high flyer, which-
Well, I'd like to move that-
Is a good thing.
With that, I'd like to move that we approve this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions. First one is ordinance two-thousand eighteen dash zero one, amending, this is the first reading, by the way, of amending titles nine, twelve, and seventeen of municipal code regarding hunting within the city limits. This is the first reading of the ordinance amendment to revise the city's hunting regulations, which will do, which will address changes in state law that have rendered our current regulations unenforceable, and it'll consolidate the rules into one location in municipal code. The second reading will be on January twenty-third at our next meeting. Does the council have any questions?
Yep. So, I'm looking through this. Do we have a plan of how we're going to allow on certain areas, whether you can go and bow hunt or wherever, or is it going to be separated by residential or city or non-resident, or is that a separate topic beyond this? Or where do we go with that?
I can address part of that as being part of the park board.
Sure.
So, there's a state law that essentially made it a requirement of cities not to be able to disallow hunting within their city limits. So, this is in part a reaction to that law, or a follow-up to that law. And it is within the city's rights to say, no, we're not going to allow hunting, but it's likely to face a challenge, and that's not necessarily what we want. And so, the various committees, including the Plan Commission and the Park Board and others, took a look at where it might be suitable, and what would be the least likely types of hunting to impact kind of the residential neighborhoods and primarily from a safety perspective. And so, the areas that you see on the map, and mine is in black and white, so it's not showing very well, but there are three different areas that staff recommended, anyway, for inclusion or for allowing hunting. And it was also determined that bow hunting was the least, safety-wise, would have the least amount of ramifications for city residents. The other part is, it's a positive thing to allow hunting, and there aren't that many places in this area where hunting on public lands is an available thing. There's a lot of private land around in Pierce County and St. Croix County, so it's an opportunity for hunters in and right around River Falls to have some public land to hunt on. So, that was the general process and some of the thinking behind it. The committees came up with these three areas, one down by Man Valley, one off of Double F, and then one, which isn't really very accessible, but it is, does kind of meet the conditions, and so, that's why those three were put forward.
So, let me ask on that further, Hal, if I could then. So, you said city resident, so any one of those three properties, can you, because we have signs up there as a city right now that says no trespassing. So, hunting season comes along, you have a hunting license, can you go there, or do you need a special permit? Are you thinking that you'd be needing to go on to that property to bow hunt on there? So, we have a number of individuals here right now that are from the town.
Well, in the staff report, it does say that they have to seek permission first from the city, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stifter is the contact for that. And if the land is leased, as is the case out in Man Valley and the Double F property-
Correct.
Both, we have, you have to, we have to, we will then seek approval from the tenant before permission is granted. They would have to maintain their own license, just as they would any other hunt, and I don't think that's an issue. But that's, I think that, my understanding is, as I talked to staff when I reviewed the packet, and through plan, and, as Hal mentioned, through park, is that's the process. They call City Hall, they talk to Mr. Stifter. He then says, yep, what days do you want to go out there? And sets it up, and we approve it or disapprove it based on whatever the situation is. The other comment I would make is that these properties today are undeveloped, and those potentially could change. Obviously, the Man Valley property has no immediate plans, nor does the Double F property, although we've had some discussions about potentially a dog park out there or something, so that, there's potential to change that. The property that I would say is somewhat maybe northeast of the Best Maide property, the one that provides very limited access, probably would be the last to develop, I would imagine, but you never know. But so, my point is, to those hunters in the audience, they're available today. I think it's, I support it, just as Hal does, but just be prepared that down the road, it could, it could develop, and that could then go away.
All right, so let me go further on this. So, the tenant that's there, do they have to call Mike to ask for permission, or with them being the tenant, do they have access to a complete season, or do they have to get a day pass or a permit pass, a week pass? Or how are we looking at doing that?
I'll add a couple of things during the public comment, or whether some of the residents or neighbors may have some comments. I'm not so sure. It should be assumed they're pro-hunting. It could be as much, I think, there's some concerns about hunting. And again, this is specifically bow hunting, just for clarification, not rifle or anything else. Act fifty-one is what basically took out the provision of arbitrarily limiting bow hunting, not hunting in general, just bow hunting. And so, that's what the focus of this is. This, you know, after we did a survey of all of our city-owned land, came up with the possibility of these three parcels being possibilities for bow hunting. The Double F property, I will mention, too, is only the portion, that's the ag and tree portion, not what we anticipate being the dog parks. It's only a portion of that overall acreage out there. As far as the tenants and the process, I thought is, our thought is, it'll probably stay quite simple. We'll likely update the signage, you know, to reflect contact in the city. There's not likely a permit or a fee, you know, we're trying to keep. And it's been typically a very simple process to date in the past when we've had requests. You know, it's typically been Terry Kuzlik in the past. Terry had worked with them, again, the land, you know, or the renters. We would anticipate doing that again with the renters, whether it was them making the request, family members of there making the request, or others making the request to use that. Just making sure everyone's on the same page. The particular part with the rented land is just to prevent crop damage and things like that, because hunting could occur at certain times of the year where there's crops, and we want to minimize that and that potential disruption and damage.
So, am I going further on my question? So, the tenant, will he have to call you to say, Mike, I'd like to hunt the land that we're renting from the city?
Yeah, that would be recommended in that case. And the good thing is, we have a pretty good communication with our renters themselves in that regard. It's more of those that would want access to it. And I would say the couple we've had this year have been that, a student or two from UWF who want to do some goose hunting in the fall, things like that. Some of the adjacent landowners who maybe want to use it for a family hunt in the fall, for possibly animals that would come on to the property, you know, city-owned property. So, it's been things like that. And again, our goal is to keep it generally simple, but there would be some process, I think, to work out, depending on if all properties are allowed after the second reading, or portions of. So, we'll see where that goes. What makes this one particularly complex is whether we allow for the bow hunting or not. We did take the opportunity to kind of clean up other parts of our ordinance, so kind of looking at how to untangle, detangle all of that would be maybe an added challenge for us. But something certainly we'd consider going forth.
And are you going to be doing a first come, first served for those people that do come, or?
Typically. And again, that's why we try to keep the, you know, the, channeling it to the one person as best we can, just so we can kind of coordinate that portion of- of it. That's, that's what's been assumed, you know, to date, so.
And I don't think there'll be thousands, but do you kind of have any idea of what you would limit it to, the number of people that you would-
No, I, I think, again, I don't see it really changing, you know, really what this is to honor some of the legacy hunting that's occurred, you know, families, residents, neighbors that have done it before, and, and there aren't many, you know, if we get a half dozen requests in a year, that's about it. And again, I don't see that probably changing now that we've made this change. We've allowed some hunting in the past in, you know, connection with our ordinance, so I don't necessarily see this changing. And then as, you know, Councilman Morset's mentioned, with the potential for development and things, you know, this is probably a relatively short-term, intermediate, you know, change. I think in time, development will, will likely lead to changes in some of those areas. The Man Valley one probably most likely, you know, potentially Double F, you know, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For clarification, this law is more to bring into compliance with state law, correct?
Correct. And again, the state law doesn't necessarily, it just says you can arbitrarily. So the goal was, well, then let's review all of our land. We vetted it through, and Hal, as Councilman Watson had mentioned, vetted it through the Park Board and others, and involved, you know, our Public Works crews, police, to get just kind of a sense of, you know, do these three properties make sense? These are kind of the three that made the list. But again, if council were to decide, we're not allowing any of it, it's at least been thoroughly vetted. It just took out, you couldn't arbitrarily have an ordinance in place limiting all of it. So I think if at the end of the day, we decide none of it's allowed, we've at least vetted the process. So there's nothing to say we'd be running against state law, it's just that we've, we've actually vetted it in a very public way.
It sounds like you guys have done your due diligence and had really done a good work for our residents that might want to hunt on public land or others. I also know that this, this, what we're talking about here only applies to city residents, or to city-
City land.
Public property, but the law says you can actually hunt on your own personal property as well, bow hunting-
Certain, certain elements of distances, things like that.
Within a hundred feet of an occupied-
A hundred yards.
Hundred yards, sorry.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
Good question for you, Mike. Is this land have any, I know it's mostly farm and forest, but is it potentially going to be under any type of multi-use, or is it currently under different types of usage?
I don't believe any of it currently is, but again, it's not to say that doesn't change in, in time in that regard, but I think as it's zoned right now, no. But does that change in time, and then back to the point of, does a portion of, or do one of these three, two of these three become a mute point at that, potentially?
So we're just meeting a state need at this point?
Correct. Or at least, again, addressing it in a public way, yeah.
So a question, I guess either for you or Chief Young, that hundred yards, I guess there could be some speculation as far as what that is. So let's say I'm, I live here, and there's two neighbors that live on the other side of me, and their house is within a hundred yards of mine, because just about any house in the city would be. Does that include me shooting into the woods out back to target practice? Because their, their houses are still within-
It's a good question, and we can get some clarification on that. I, I had not thought of it in that way prior to today, when our staff had asked that, and I don't believe, so I, you know, but we will get a little bit more information on that to that question and that hundred yards.
Yeah, there's a lot of houses in the city limits that have woods abutting them, or they don't have anybody within a thousand yards of them, and you're not going to get an arrow to go a thousand yards unless you're shooting up in the air.
Yeah.
Typically hits the ground and bangs them.
Within city property, I'm not aware of too many lots that would probably be that large, but again, if you look at a combination of, potentially, but at the time, we didn't think there was much that would probably fit that within a hundred yards of a property, or of a structure, I should say.
I just asked that because I could see that coming, you know, someone calling in their neighbor, hey, there's somebody shooting bow in there within a hundred yards of my house. Well, okay, you're not pointing it at the house, you're pointing it at the woods out in there, and you're not going to get it to fly that way. So that's just kind of some clarification I think would be great for-
The council, if the council approves the ordinance as written, you should assume, unless your house touches the green, you cannot discharge into any woods, whether it's public or not, unless it's the green designated woods. So I mean, that, that's part of this process is, people should, with bows, should assume they cannot fire them in the city without Mike Stifter's permission. That's, I mean, that's the way this is set up if the ordinance is passed, and right now, it's, it's, we've by de facto left it to the city administrator. So I've, for nine years, have been fielding muskrat, beaver, goose, opossum, raccoon, deer, dove, anything you could imagine that people could hunt, they've contacted, they found a way to call City Hall and say, I'd like to hunt this or trap this on this, and we've essentially had an ordinance that allowed me to say, sorry, you know, we're not, we're not going to do that, with the exception of, we've allowed some of the neighbors of these properties that we've acquired over time to continue practices that we felt had been going on before we, we became the owner of the property. So they could chase a deer from their property onto ours, we weren't giving them permission to set up a bunch of tree stands and, and hunt. And this now would, would prohibit the gun hunting and would focus on bow hunting only on city property. So this will take it a step further than what currently is allowed. And the council has a policy prerogative to take the recommendation and modify it with, with reason. So if the council's thinking at the second reading, which there'll be a public hearing also, that they want to modify this map in any way, tract or otherwise, you have the ability to do that. Act fifty-one just says you can't just blanket prohibit bow hunting in the city. So you still have some ability to say, well, I don't, I don't want the county FF, and here's the three reasons why I don't think bow hunting there is, is a good, good public, public thing, and I think that would pass muster. But these are the three possible areas with permission that you may be able to bow hunt in their city River Falls, I think is the best way to, to put it.
So by state law, can the city regulate hunting on, bow hunting on private property?
Yes, we can regulate according to the state statutes, I mean, which wouldn't allow you, I think it's-
Hundred yards.
Hundred yards.
It's improbable that there's property in River Fall, private property in which you can bow hunt, where you wouldn't run into the hundred yard rule. But there's, there's probably some parcels out there I haven't thought of, but we could do a pretty easy map with our GIS system to say, here's the, here's the three parcels in town where you could theoretically stand somewhere on your property and not be a hundred yards, but-
I'm just trying to clarify.
Think we would discourage, certainly the police chief and I would discourage people from doing any bow hunting on their private property within the city limits.
And as it says in the memo, in Mike's memo, it's a hundred yards bow hunting. It doesn't say aiming your, your bow and arrows a certain direction to make that a hundred yards is if you're within-
Hunting off the street.
Right.
Yep, sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, next move on to ordinance two thousand eighteen, number two, amending multifamily design standards in section seventeen point seven-three of the municipal code. There again, this is the first reading. This, this ordinance would be an interim improvement until such time that a complete update of section seventeen point seven-three of the code is completed. The second reading is January twenty-third. Anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question. Where are we on this update of section seventeen seventy-three?
A comprehensive update?
Yeah.
We are-
Well, what's this, what this is referring to? The update?
We have not begun one and don't plan to begin a comprehensive, so interim could be two years, three years. It's not currently part of the administration's major work plan.
Okay. So we're putting it down and saying that until we have a final documentation, yep, we don't even have it on the agenda that we're going to be looking at doing a finalized one, or?
Of a comprehensive review.
Yeah, of a comprehensive.
No, we're just acknowledging as staff that this is a kind of a tweak, a small addition.
Is this something that's going to come up in the city comprehensive plan in the future, essentially? This is a small step, is what you're saying, towards a-
The comprehensive plan is the broader framework of something that would be a look at the actual ordinances. So if there was policy direction in the comp plan, then you would use that, the Plan Commission would use that to start to, to work into the, the ordinances, the whole chapters.
I guess from my perspective, you know, if you've identified in this, in your memo, the lack, and then within the current design standards, you know, even if we're just doing a couple of tweaks here, to me, it, it should be on the agenda at some point for the Plan Commission to kind of take this up and probably, I mean, I'm not saying tomorrow or even the next six months, but it sounds like there's an issue here that needs to be addressed. I wouldn't put it off to some vague time in the future.
Well, it sounds like you're just putting Band-Aids on top of sores already, so.
So I don't know what the, you know, how busy the Plan Commission is, but I think maybe that's something that, that should be considered.
It's probably not the workload of the Plan Commission, but the staff supporting the Plan Commission, that's the concern. So I, I mean, if you want something less vague, I would say it's not going to be done in the next twenty-four months, because the, the administration's work plan does not have, have the effort indicated to do what it would be a comprehensive. And the council can certainly say to us, then don't bring us these little things, and we, we would take that direction also.
Are you saying that we can't put this as a priority? I mean, I would think that we, as a council, do have that authority to say, no, Scott, this is the priority, this is what we want staff to work on.
No, that's exactly what you have the prerogative to do, but you've already told us what your priorities are.
But we can, but can't we, we, do we not have the flexibility to be adjustable?
I don't believe we have the flexibility for you to just add without, without delete.
Not add, but to readjust.
Yes.
There's a difference.
We'd have to take something off.
Right, take something off.
Council has the authority to do that at any time, but I'm telling you what the, you know, our staff workload issues, I would suggest that you've told us what your priorities were, and this wasn't one of them, and that's why we mentioned it in the memo that-
Yeah, at that time.
Don't plan on a big comprehensive review.
Do we know how old that section is?
I couldn't say offhand.
And we discussed this, we discussed that same thing at Planning Commission, and we came to the same conclusion. This, this Band-Aid, whatever you want to call it, needs to be done. And yes, it's going to be a year, two years, maybe three years before we get to, the staff has time to overhaul this whole ordinance, which we deemed wasn't that big of a deal.
During which time, there may be other tweaks-
Right.
That come before the council as well. This is kind of, this, these ordinances can be kind of a work in progress, I know, as different issues arise when new buildings are built, and we haven't quite seen exactly that issue before. So I don't see this as some kind of a, an indication that we need major revisions at this time, although of course, eventually, everything needs to be looked at.
Yeah. Well, and from the Plan Commission standpoint, this, what this does is this pulls back some staff reviews, some, there was a project that was done, it turns out it was an okay project, and they were, they were, they were, they worked with the city to do some things like add sidewalks and some different things. But what this does is this closes a loophole that's on there today to, to allow us to have a little more say in some of these design standards. So this was on the work plan, this was an option we could have selected, if I'm, if I remember right, it was up on the wall when we did the work plan. It didn't grade where we were. I had a conversation with staff that was frankly about the same, you know, the same approach and, and attitude, and, and I understand where they're coming from. I don't necessarily like that we can't get back to it either, but the reality of it is, we have, we have other projects that we decided as a body to move forward with, and I think we should stick with that. If we decide to take this up and, and do this, then we will have to go back and eliminate another project. And, you know, if we want to do that, that's fine. I personally wouldn't be in favor of that.
Well, I'm not opposed to Band-Aids. I think you have to do some Band-Aids, but I guess it's disturbing to hear, or the sense that we should have maybe had a further discussion on that, on the, when we were putting together our priorities. If, if we have an ordinance or multi-size ordinance on this, on our municipal codes, that it sounds like it needs a major reviewing, not never necessarily overhaul, but review, because it sounds like there could be lots of Band-Aids there that we'll talk about as they come forward, but, and this happens to be one that we're talking about right now, which, again, I'm not opposed to this one Band-Aid, but it sounds like we need some review on this.
We could put more staff in next year's budget.
There, you know, ideally, this would not be the only thing that also needs further review. We probably have forty other ordinances that need further review. If we had it our way, we could, you know, we could spend all the time reviewing ordinances and going through and changing ands to buts and ifs to ors, and, you know, and accomplish nothing else in the city. I think this is, this is, this is an, again, I was not enamored with the fact that we were going to just, that we were just going to, you know, do a little fix here, but we discovered there was a loophole, and thank goodness, the developer we worked with was amenable enough to go back and put sidewalks in where it wasn't required in the current ordinance. So this takes, this takes the review process a little more stringent and tighter for staff to, for staff to be, have a little more say as opposed to just, yep, you meet the qualifications, there's your permit.
Well, I think it's safe to say there's not that much pressure on these issues. You know, if we had, if we had five hundred permits upstairs and we had to deal with them, that would be a different topic, but that's just not true.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay, let's move on to reports then. First, we're going to have a report from River Falls Economic Development Corporation, and Daniel Campo is going to give us a little presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I want to talk to you about the River Falls Economic Development Corporation, but first, my name is Daniel Campo. I'm the Director of the Center for Innovation and Business Development with the University of Wisconsin, River Falls, and I currently serve as the president, excuse me, of the River Falls Economic Development Corporation. So I have a brief presentation for you, some slides that I'll draw your attention to, and first wanted to start with a brief background of the River Falls EDC. The charge that, really for the River Falls EDC is to increase employment opportunities through industrial development. This organization was created back in nineteen eighty-eight through support of the city council at that time, and throughout the years, while our charge has changed a little bit and has, has molded, really, our, our main goal is to support economic development in the city corporate parks, currently the Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park as well as Sterling Ponds. Have a picture here of the current Board of Directors. From left, left to right, you'll see Dale Jorgensen, myself, Don Peepgrass, Jerry Wilkins, Jack Cullen, Paul Schwabach, and Scott Simpson. We have had some recent transitions within the board. Currently, we like to have about eleven members on the board, that's what our bylaws states, so we've had some recent transitions and do anticipate filling about three positions. In addition, the board also recently authorized the addition of a few ex-official members, including the St. Croix EDC Executive Director, the Pierce County EDC Executive Director, and our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Our goal there is to really help increase the number of individuals that are involved in economic development, that are at the table, providing guidance, advice, as well as sharing of information as it relates to business development in the city. So recent activities, as I mentioned, our, our charge is to really support economic development. That can mean a lot of different things. However, when the organization was established, the real goal was to create a business park, which was done, create an incubator, which is on its path to being done, as I'll talk about in a little bit, as well as market and help the city market and develop some of the existing plots, as well as buildings that are available. So in the past, the EDC has been very successful at build-to-sue, lease-to-own opportunities. A couple of examples include the building that is currently owned by Rush River out in the Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park, as well as what we recently did, actually, it was two years ago, the sale of the two eighty-three Troy Street building to Migma Flooring. So in these build-to-sue, lease-to-own opportunities, it really helps these businesses, these owners, establish themselves in a facility, they're leasing the space from the River Falls EDC, and then at a point when their business is successful, they're able to purchase that building from us. So in that situation, we have- So in that situation, we have, uh, made some funds or accumulated some funds through those opportunities that we've been able to now reinvest in a larger project, which is the Saint Croix Valley Business Innovation Center. Um, in addition to that, we also review the covenants out at the, at the corporate parks, the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park and the Whitetail Ridge. Um, and more recently, we've also participated in architectural review for some of the, the new buildings that have gone up in those corporate parks, including the Winfield United Center, um, the NCCM Edition, as well as Turnkey Corrections and Three Square Market. So I'll focus the rest of my presentation and talk about the details of the Saint Croix Valley Business Innovation Center, because that's where a majority of the effort for the River Falls EDC has been for the past couple of years. This is a picture that was taken last fall, and we are nearing completion. So construction is almost done and we are set to open, soft opening, February first of this year. Very excited about the project. Um, I will be managing this facility as a university employee. Uh, their contribution is management, operational management for the facility. So while I'm on the board, I also, uh, will be managing the facility for the River Falls EDC who owns the facility. Um, that again, thank you very much that, for the city council's support of this facility along the way. Uh, this may be a little bit hard to read, so I'll read this for you, but I wanted to talk about the mission statement. What is the purpose of the Saint Croix Valley Business Innovation Center? Why is this a really important part for economic development in the city and in the region? Uh, so our mission statement reads that the Saint Croix Valley Business Innovation Center will foster entrepreneurship and enhance success of new and existing small businesses through a comprehensive program of business incubation, resulting in more dynamic and diverse regional economy, new job opportunities, and increased wealth. That is our mission. In terms of the regional impact of the facility, we did have a feasibility study conducted by Place Dynamics back in twenty twelve, and it was estimated that even with a market penetration of about ten percent, it's projected that will assist about one thousand one hundred and twenty individuals each year. This is through a combination, not just of renting out the space that is available within the facility, but also through the programming, as well as the meeting space that will be in the facility. So in addition to renting space, I'll show you a floor plan in a few minutes here, uh, we also offer a coworking opportunity. So similar to the cocoa spaces that you might see, um, in some of the metropolitan areas, individuals, businesses, entrepreneurs can actually purchase a membership for, um, a nominal fee per month to utilize the facility while they're helping to grow either their business or even themselves individually. Um, in addition, we have a training room that's fifteen hundred square foot, as well as a conference room. And out of those facilities, we anticipate deploying a number of business and industry training programs and services. This could be workshops from everything, ranging from social media marketing all the way to how do you use QuickBooks or Office three sixty-five to help your business become more efficient. So we are very excited to partner, partner with CBTC as well as the university and other, uh, partners who will be offering that, that type of programming to support small business development in the area. I wanted to make a note about return on investment. Uh, so as, as the city council likely recalls, uh, the city, city of River Falls is a strong partner in the Innovation Center. In addition to that, the, we received a federal grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. The River Falls Economic Development Corporation also contributed funds to this, as well as the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. And it is very common in incubation to have a public-private partnership make these projects move forward. Um, and interestingly, in research that was done, it suggests that for incubators, there's a five to one ROI on public investment, meaning as a four million dollar project, there's a re, uh, an estimated return in investment of about twenty million dollars. Now, this is a twenty-year project, so the timeframe of this, um, is extended out twenty years. But still, I, I think the point here is that because of the investment in this facility, we can expect a return on that investment in terms of economic impact at a pretty high value, at a pretty, pretty, pretty good, excuse me, pretty good rate. Uh, so we do have the floor plan and just a couple more slides before, um, I'll ask for any questions. As I mentioned, we do have a combination of different spaces within the facility. In the light green area that you see on the top of the presentation, that is manufacturing or light industrial space. We have roughly twelve thousand square feet of light industrial space that could be divided into about four bays or for four different tenants. In addition, in the front half of the facility, we have a combination of private offices, a private office suite, workstations, as well as that coworking space that I mentioned in the training room and the conference room. And in addition, we also have a second floor, about sixty-three hundred square feet of open space. Uh, what I think is really unique about this facility, especially when you compare them to different incubators around the state, around even the nation, is the fact that we have a very multi-use facility. As you can see, we have a number of different spaces, so we can support a number of different industries as well, whether it's light manufacturing, um, or technology company, small businesses, larger businesses, even a stage-two company would certainly benefit from leasing a space like this. Um, in terms of the program, we anticipate most companies will be just leasing the space for about two to three years. Really, the main goal of this program in this center is to help businesses grow, and we want to do that within about a two to three-year period, and then help them locate out into the region. And again, research shows that most businesses that started within an incubator, about seventy-five percent of them, will locate in the host region. So that helps grow the regional economy as well in Wisconsin. Partners, I wanted to mention the founding partners are those that were recipients of the Economic Development Administration grant, included the River Falls Economic Development Corporation, who owns the facility, the City of River Falls, the University of Wisconsin River Falls, and Chippewa Valley Technical College. And also wanted to mention that we have additional partners, of course, the U.S. EDA, as well as the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, and the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, which helped to write the seven hundred-plus-page grant that was required, uh, to get the, the dollars from the EDA. In addition, we've recently had some donors within the facility as well. So I want to recognize Wisconsin Credit Union, Royal Credit Union, Three Square Market, and the Saint Croix EDC, who have all contributed funds to the facility as well. In closing, as I mentioned, we do anticipate opening in February of twenty eighteen, and also wanted to mention we have a tentative date set for a grand opening ceremony, an open house for April twelfth, twenty eighteen. Would welcome you all to, to join us at that public event. In addition, if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to visit www.saintcroixinovation.org. You can sign up for our newsletter, and that will be the best way for you to connect with us on social media and stay up to date on programming and events that we'll have. Thank you.
You got questions?
Danielle, I appreciate it, uh, the tour you gave me, what, two weeks ago, was it, or?
I believe so.
It was, it was a great tour. It was a nice facility. Where are you at right now with your return on investment with people, um, signing up and, um, giving you a lease?
Yeah, so we actually have, uh, drafted a lease for two bays as well as the off, private office suite. Uh, so we have that in, in the works right now, as well as
And the, the manufacturing?
The manufacturing area, that's right. Yeah, yeah. As well as a number of coworkers that have indicated interest and have said, all right, as soon as you're ready to go, let me know, I'd like to come. And I think the coworking space is a fantastic opportunity and a lot of, a low-risk opportunity, I would say, for individuals to test out the facility. Come visit us, try it out for a month, and then apply into the incubation program.
I know you maybe can't share the name, but what type of manufacturing is it that is looking to, um, consumers, um, taking the, the two bays? Is it light manufacturing? Is it wood? Is it plastic? Is it, what is it?
Uh, maybe I could defer to Scott for the, the non, or the confidential, uh, answer to that question.
It's a material science company. So it's a combination of those materials.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, I think it, you know.
And then we'll have to put up, or not we, but, um, the economic development, um, building, they'll have to put up walls in there then?
Yeah, that'll, that'll all be negotiated. And the, the space was meant to be flexible so that we can work with each tenant as they come in. Do they want demising walls? Do they need additional leasehold improvements? We can work with them on that, so all that would be negotiated upon, uh, terms of the lease.
Is there a number people can call if they're interested?
Absolutely. Individuals can call seven one five, four two five, zero six four three. That number will ring to my office. If they're interested, feel free to give me a call. Be happy to discuss, set up a tour, um, and answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
And next we have the minister's report. If anybody's got anything for Scott?
Thinking of your questions, January sixteenth election polls open seven AM to eight PM. This is a special election for, uh, the Senate. You will vote in the same place for this special election that you have voted in the previous couple of elections. The change in polling place for District Three will not occur until after, um, this January election. The change will occur potentially for, um, folks on February twentieth, if there's a statewide primary. Um, right now, the only local primary is for District Four, so there will be a primary February twentieth for District Four residents, and I think it's likely that there'll be a statewide primary. I don't know that I've seen a ballot, formal ballot yet from the state, but I suspect Supreme Court or something will have, um, a statewide. So it's likely that we'll have February twentieth primaries, um, for, for every, um, every voter. Um, and District Three will be having a relocation from the middle school to the Hoffman Park for their voting. Um, we've made some progress with the Wisconsin DOT. I know the council had asked, many of you had asked me what is going on, um, on the, uh, Highway twenty-nine south, um, let's see, did I get the right highway? Yes, twenty-nine south, um, Main Street extended south from Cemetery, um, to Double F-F. Um, and I think we're heading in the right direction now with the Wisconsin DOT, um, that they're understanding that's an important part of the city. And it's, we're not likely to leave it as a fifty-five mile an hour, um, freeway from Cemetery to, to Double F. So hopefully we'll get something worked out there with them. We are going to provide a fiscal, or I'm sorry, a workshop calendar for the council for twenty eighteen. We're planning to do that at the organizational meeting, um, but we are likely to have a workshop on the fiscal plan. We have to still try to schedule that with all of you, but potentially, um, the first or second meeting in February, because I know you don't have much on the agenda those, those nights. Um, but I think we need to get, um, plan would be to do a fiscal plan update, um, status update, provide the council kind of where we think the fiscal plan is at, um, and go from there. I don't expect at that workshop we would finalize or get everybody to shake their head on this is what we're planning to do for the fiscal plan, but I think we want to introduce it to the council, get you a chance to look at it, and I don't think we've set that date yet, have we? We have?
That's on my, it's on my calendar.
Good.
Thirteenth, four thirty.
See, people are ahead of me, so that's good.
Punch at four forty-five. New construction five.
Um, we've, uh, we will extend, as we have in the past, invitations to, um, candidates that are on the ballot to all of those, just so the council's aware. Uh, we don't stop doing what we're doing to wait till the election, keep going, but we invite, uh, candidates to come to those and kind of get up to speed or, or watch what's going on so that if they make a decision in the future, they can do that. Um, I think that's it for my announcements. We've been, um, staying busy with a lot of, uh, development interest. There's a little less interest when it's seventeen below, but, um, a day like this gets a lot of, there's a lot of people, I'm sure, driving around town today that are realtors or developers, um, because these are the kind of days that they've, they make sure they get out of the office, and I'm, I know many of them visited River Falls. So there's any, any variety of development interest, uh, a lot of what I would consider in community and economic development, kind of tire kickers, but you gotta, most of them kick the tires first before they buy them, so, um, we, we should have a good, uh, twenty eighteen to look forward to. Any questions?
I have a quick question for you, Scott. I was in favor of, uh, grant to get approved for the movie theater. I just wanted to see if you could be willing to speak about that a little bit, uh, for the community.
Um, any grants awarded from WE DIC, the announcements come from the state of Wisconsin, the official announcement. Um, so we'll, I would like to wait and make any announcements on that, but we, we do have an outstanding grant application for, um, to, to help, uh, redevelop, um, part of the downtown related to the Falls Theater. So at this point, I'd rather not speak directly about any award or lack of award, um, but we, we certainly are optimistic that we put together a good, um, grant, um, application, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to announce something soon.
I look forward to hearing about that. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, next we have the comptroller's report.
Uh, this is the comptroller's report for November twenty seventeen. General fund revenues through November were nine million one hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars, or ninety percent of budgeted. This compares with eleven million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, thousand dollars this time last year. The twenty sixteen sale of land to Landalakes for the Winfield Projects for one point eight eight million accounts for most of this difference. Revenue in November included one million six hundred and ninety thousand and nine dollars in shared, state shared revenues. Expenditures through November were eight million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, um, compared with seven million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand nineteen dollars a year ago. This is consistent with prior years at eighty-six percent of budgeted amounts. Net revenue over expenditures at the end of November is a budget surplus of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Thanks, Diane. Uh, I just have a couple of appointments I'd like to make, um, if the council looks favorably on them. I'd like to reappoint Derek McKay to the Business Improvement District through December of two thousand twenty, and I'd like to reappoint Mark Pashke through June of two thousand nineteen to the Downtown Design Review Committee.
I move approval of the mayor's appointments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.